Call to audit for the planning commission meeting. First, I'd like to introduce the planners. Starting from my left to right. We got Scott Sutherland in Western Carolina. Dr. Carol Horton from Port Royal. Percy Alman of Madison. Bob Schwartz from Bowling Green and George Webber from Madison. Got that right? For the staff, I got Greg Pennington. Our lawyer is Chris McKenzie. And our administrator is Lisa Sa. Thank you. Will you please stand for the President Lisa Sa. On approval of the minutes, we don't have one at this time. We got unfinished business, TXT dash O two dash twenty twenty-two. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. TXT O two twenty twenty-two is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of Caroline County by amending Article Two definitions to add the following definitions: energy storage facilities, energy storage project, and host locality. This is the same text amendment that was in front of you last month with a memo for more clarification. And so, again, we want to get these definitions into the zoning ordinance so that our definitions match the state definitions.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pennington, I've highlighted it, and it does not obligate the county to allow such activities. Is that correct?
That is correct. It would add the definitions to describe the use. However, the use is not being added as a use by right or special exception at this time. So it defines the use but does not allow the use. If the board were to direct us in the future to add the use, then at that time, we would go through public hearing to add that as a use in the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you also, because I think that's one of the questions I brought up about, this is basically describing the use but not allowing the use.
That is correct.
Thank you.
No questions?
I've got one for the attorney. If we did not add these and an applicant came in and wanted to, for one of these types of facilities, would we have the ability to say no? That would still come to the planning commission and then go to the board, correct?
Well, right now, I think, and Mr. Pennington can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, if someone came in for an energy storage facility, the staff would tell them those are not permitted in the county. The issue is that in reading the existing ordinance, someone could say, well, maybe this qualifies as a public utility generation use, and that's allowed in some places. And there's confusion there that whether or not this would be allowed. And by defining a specific use, it makes clear to a certain extent to the general public that this is the use that you want to do, right? As opposed to having a general one that might apply, there's a specific one that definitely describes the proposed use, energy storage facility. And then they see that that's not a permitted use in their district, or in any district.
Okay.
Mr. Pennington, is that right?
Yes, that's correct. A third party would not be able to make application, but a utility generation could.
Right, under the existing public utility generation definition. So like a Dominion or somebody can do it under that, but not a third party.
And so the clarification in this text amendment would make it more clear that they, these uses would not fall under that generation?
Right. It's kind of, I mean, generally speaking, as we keep track of Caroline zoning ordinance, you know, over time, you need to add uses for things that just develop in the world that weren't there when it was written, you know, thirty, forty years ago. And so what staff is doing here is adding a description so it's there if it needs to be used. But as of right now, while the use is defined now, we've caught some of the definitions up to what's going on in the world right now, Caroline is still not permitting that use in any of its districts because it's not been added as a special exception use in any district.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one more, if you please. We have a lot of folks who are following the solar issue in the county. And with these solar storage facilities, these are to be run by a public utility, if I'm reading it correctly and understanding it, and that the energy will be for the sale to the public, but not to another energy facility? Or would they be allowed to sell it on the grid to another agency?
If we were to add battery storage as a u, energy storage as a use, then at that time, we would develop standards for that use and what would be allowed and what would not be allowed. Being that this is just the definition, then we haven't created standards because we don't, because the use is not allowed.
Very good. Thank you.
So this is just basically establishing this text amendment to be described as just energy storage. Is that correct?
It's three definitions. It is energy storage facility, energy storage project, and host locality are the three definitions that are being added.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair? This is not a public hearing?
No, it's not. I got an example. Like Dominion want to store batteries, they have to come before the board?
Who they come to?
Come to us.
Yes. Because the only thing we're doing is just establishing the words, the words. That's all this text amendment is doing, as far as I can understand. If I'm wrong, I'll gladly stand corrected.
You are right, yeah. So this text amendment is exactly right. Adding more specific language to the zoning ordinance that could be used in the future to allow this use generally, to allow any company to come in and say, I'd like to set up an energy storage facility. As opposed to a solar farm, I want to set up an energy storage facility, a big, a battery area where we store this energy. That's not allowed right now, though, because there's no district that allows that by right or by special exception. However, there is a separate use, and again, part of the purpose of this text amendment is to distinguish between energy storage facility, which would be a new, newly defined use, and the existing use, public utility generation. That's currently allowed in the county in the M1 districts with a special exception. But that is limited to a Dominion energy-type company, a utility generation company. And they would still need to get a special exception for that.
Thank you.
Has the staff considered adding clarity to the public utility generation definition to exclude this?
No, we have not looked at adjusting the public utility generation definition at this time. If you'd like us to, that's something we could look at.
I'm just, you know, I'm wondering whether, you know, I said this the last meeting, whether we're getting ahead of ourselves. I know we're re-looking at the ordinance. And, you know, my concern is that maybe by just, you know, approving this text amendment that if there's another method to do it and give us an opportunity to do a comprehensive review of that ordinance when it comes and add definitions at that point, might be better suited. And maybe the text amendment would be better suited for an existing definition. We could add clarity that says it excludes these types of facilities. Just something to think about.
Procedurally, if you want, you can defer again and request the alternative language to be developed and to have, so you can consider them both. Or you could vote on this tonight and also request the alternative language.
And if we vote on these text amendments for the definitions, we still have oversight on what comes down the road, if I'm correct?
That's right. I mean, the existing public utility generation use is only permitted by special exception in.
We know what's going on with the state. To address this text amendment, that's my opinion. I'll make a motion. Motion I make is whereas the public necessity convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practices warrants the approval of TXT O two twenty twenty-two, I recommend that this be forwarded to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. And so this, this does have to go to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, the text amendment has to go to the Board of Supervisors and be added to the ordinance.
Okay.
Public hearing is now open. Do we have a protocol, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The purpose of the public hearing is for the Caroline County Planning Commission to listen carefully to the verbal expression of position and opinion from the citizens of Caroline County. Public hearings are not question and answer sessions or debates, and all statements should be addressed to the chair. When members of the public offer a comment, they need to clearly state their name and voting district prior to making their comments. Applicants or their representative will be allowed fifteen minutes to introduce information regarding the matter advertised for public hearing. Persons speaking at public hearings are respectfully requested to keep comments brief, not to exceed three minutes, and to address only those issues pertinent to the matters advertised for public hearing. And we do have a timer up here that would be running for people so they can keep an eye on that. Appicent public hearing has been closed. The applicant or representative of the applicant will be allowed ten minutes to address any issues identified by the public.
Thank you. Public hearing on RC dash O one dash twenty twenty-two. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting approval of rezoning from R one residential and RP rural preservation to PRD planned residential development in order to construct seventy townhouse units. The R one portion of this land is rezoned with the creation of Campbell's Creek subdivision. The intent at that time was to connect Deerfield Road through the rear portion of the subdivision. That portion of Campbell's Creek was not developed due to limiting factors at the time. This rezoning would allow for seventy townhouse units to be constructed in Deerfield Road to connect as originally designed. The property will be served by public water and sewer as the parcel is located within the public utility service corridor. Property is bounded by the existing Campbell's Creek subdivision and Ladies Smith Village. The area in Ladies Smith Village is designated for single-family homes detached. V dot comments were not received in time for the applicant to request GDP hires with consideration by the planning commission. The applicant will address all V dot items on the GDP. There were no other issues identified in the remaining agency comments. The 2030 conference of plan designates this area as low-density residential within the Ladies Smith Grove area. This use would be inconsistent with the conference of plan due to the density of the townhouse subdivisions. Either straight single-family detached or a mix of townhouse and single-family dwellings would be more appropriate with the conference of plan and the existing approved developments. No proffers have been offered for consideration by the planning commission at this time.
Thank you. This applicant present. Don't speak.
Good evening. I'm Ray Freeland with Freeland Engineering, and I'll be supporting the application for the, for the other property. So, when we start this, this is a development that was laid out many years ago. There was a plan developed to show, you know, a higher density than the low-density residential that's there now. I think, you know, the zoning in that area is really mixed and matched. So you have low-density residential, you have mixed use all around the one side of it, you have some commercial, you have some RU zoning there. So there's really no consistency in that area. You know, a mixed use, as you mentioned, is more consistent with townhouses than single families. I mean, that fits right into the PE designation that we're trying to get it reset into. So we've worked through this, and we think we have a nice layout. There's a couple of things we have to figure out. So, we have the next, V dot comments weren't officially given to us, but we did get some comments from the staff, from them. And, you know, they had nothing to really disapprove or approve. They requested, you know, that no traffic study was necessary. We're going to generate about eighty-nine trips a day, additional trips back into there. We'll be entering solely on Deerfield Road, so we're not going to really get at Campbell's Creek subdivision very much. We're proposing a trail system we put in, we're proposing a playground area. And one of the things that, you know, we would be willing to do would be allow Campbell's Creek folks to use that, to use the trails and the playground. So, you know, it's our opinion that the zoning that we're requesting is pretty consistent in that area. There's probably more of a PE designation in that area than there is the low-density residential. If you look at the cost plan, you know, our little strip is really not a very large strip. The rest of Campbell's Creek is low-density residential, but everything around that is going to be a planned development use. So, that's really all I have to say. I mean, but, you know, I can answer questions or comments from anybody that has it, but we think it's a pretty good plan. It's very beneficial to the county. Tax revenue won't cause a lot of stress on the school systems. You know, the clients have been in this area for a long time. They're businessmen and business owners, business ladies as well. So, you know, I think it'd be a good match for that area of the community and should fit real nicely in this round. You have any questions? Rudy, press.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Now we'll open up the public hearing. If anyone wants to speak for or against us, please come up, please.
Good evening. My name is John Powell. I actually live in Campbell's Creek. Can't remember what the voting district is. I do apologize for that. I've looked at the plans that have been provided in regards to this project. I do have a lot of concerns. My property is right behind the cul-de-sac that they will be turning into the road that is going to be wrapping around towards Deerfield. Right now, my back of my property has an easement. That easement has a stormwater area going behind it. My biggest concern is what plans the builder has to address that particular easement and that particular drainage. That drainage goes all the way to the South River, which is just behind where their new development's going to be. As of right now, sorry, as of right now, that's one of the bigger concerns I have. There's other concerns, too. While they have it, they're not required to do a traffic study, Route One has no turn lane into Deerfield. So while we talk about whatever impact they may be doing while building this particular property, we're adding seventy to one hundred and forty cars. Most households have two cars. That's one hundred and forty cars coming in and out of that subdivision. That's, that to me is an issue. Now, I know that's more of a V dot thing than it is y'all's, but you have to wait for that and look into that as well, my personal opinion on that one. So there are some issues and some concerns. Other concerns are, is this particular property, while the, according to the gentleman, they will be allowing us to use the land that's behind this area, specifically the playgrounds and stuff like that, what guarantees do we have? What guarantees do we have the type of, you know, people are going to be coming into this area? Is this going to be low-income housing? These things can drive up and hurt property values. So that is a concern that I do have. So, one, I'll state since I have a minute left, main concern with the ditch area regarding the stormwater drains, and I'm wondering if they've done a stormwater survey, and how they're going to handle that issue, because the way it goes, it goes straight under the road they're going to be creating. The next one, again, is how traffic's going to be flowing in and out once these places are built, and we have at least one hundred and forty cars coming in and out extra of the subdivision. Again, there's no turn lane to turn into Deerfield. That being said, that could be a very big issue for and impact the rest of the residents there. And the last thing, again, what type of use is this going to be beyond just residential? Again, is this going to be low-income housing? Is this going to be high-income housing? What are we looking at in this particular instance? They have their plans. I'm guessing their plans are going to have to be approved fully after the rezoning's done, but plans do change. The other big issue, and this will be the last one, is I do have a concern with privacy behind my property. As of right now, I have no privacy issues because there's nobody behind me. What are they going to do about that?
Sir, I'm going to have to ask you to wrap up.
Yep, I got it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For or against?
I'm Robert Withers, and I live in the other end of the cul-de-sac that this gentleman lives at. And I want to know if it's going to be federally subsidized housing. I believe that the highway department looks at ten trips per day, per unit. That'd be seven hundred vehicles split. Right now, Deerfield doesn't have that volume, and it's pristine. If it's not going to be a part of Campbell's Creek, I'd like it to be screened or fenced totally. I'd like to see a two-hundred-foot turning lane and taper on both of the southbound entrances to Campbell's Creek. We should probably look at left-turn lanes also. And, uh... That's about it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Hawkins. I live at the end of Quail Oak Drive, and I met with zoning last week where I got the plans. The problem that I'm having is with this walkthrough that they're putting through. It's coming directly behind my property and my neighbor's property. And ever since they put the pipe in that runs to Ladies Smith Village, we've had nothing but problems with the kids crossing the pipes, destroying everything back there. Her window got shot out. I got shot with BB guns. My fear is that with all these walking trails, if they're not looked after, we're going to have seventy more families of kids running through the back of our yards, because from what I'm seeing, it backs up completely to my yard, her yard, and my other neighbor's yard. So, again, we would like some kind of privacy fence put up so that our property stops getting destroyed. The kids crossed over, let three of my pit bulls out of my yard, broke the fence down. They were running through Ladies Smith Village. These have been a lot of concerns for us in the past with just the village. We're worried that if seventy more townhouses come up with walking trails and parks and they're not looked after, that we're the ones that are going to suffer. And we've lived there pretty much peaceful for a very long time. So, yes, we do have a lot of concerns. We would like to meet with them and figure out exactly what their plans are. They said they're going to have a HOA. Are they expecting Campbell's Creek to have the HOA with them? I don't think that we want that. At the same time, they're probably going to be going with Caroline Water Utility. We have Aqua, we all know. Our bills are outrageous over there, one hundred and fifty a month, you know, or more. So does that mean we get to switch back over to county water as well and pay the thirty and forty dollars a month again that we were paying so many years ago? So these are really good questions that a lot of us want answered. So I don't know if he's willing to meet with us, but that would be, you know, probably where to start, the people that are actually getting affected, where this is running behind our property lines. So that's pretty much it for me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Debra Brosden, and I live the end of Quail Oak Drive on the cul-de-sac. The creek runs directly in my backyard. Once again, to reiterate what my neighbor had mentioned, we have had numerous accounts of damage with my windows. I've had to replace eight hundred dollars' worth of windows. I've had to replace eight-hundred dollars' worth of windows. And that's going to multiply when the other walking path directly in the woods behind our homes is tapped into this one particular walking path. So that's an issue. Privacy is an issue. Noise level, I mean, it is a quiet section that we have and that will no longer exist. The turning lanes, that is an issue for Campbell's Creek, especially with that volume. We've had numerous, when you come out of Deerfield and you come out to Route One, that is a very blind spot because you're coming up a dip. And if you're at the entrance to that subdivision, a car can actually visually disappear in that dip over the creek. You cannot see it until it hits another point. There's a visual disappearing. And without turning lanes, we've had children, we had a mother and that was expecting die right there. We had two other children die right there. It's a very bad spot and you can't put that kind of volume in there without doing something with the roads. It's very dangerous. It is a, it's a hazard on a good day. As far as the planning of this community, it may have been in the works, but that was more than, I've been living in that subdivision for thirty-five years. So it was before I ever came there. I think it was when the subdivision originally was being built that those plans were in the works and that was, I think, seventy-nine, maybe, possibly earlier than that. It was, is a watershed. It used to be a, I think, a, all waste waterlands and it was all backfilled for Campbell's Creek. So the volume and the privacy and I just, I don't want to see, it may not be the fanciest subdivision, but it's what we have. And HOA, nobody needs another bill. Right now, we can't, I don't think we could absorb another bill to take care of their baseball dam mine diamond, their walking path.
Ma'am, I have to ask you to wrap up.
Okay. I just don't think that we could sustain all of what they're asking us and have it taken away. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may break protocol just once, I would like to ask Ms. Balderson a question, please, if you permit it. Can we?
I would, I would conclude public hearing and then raise the question afterwards.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Sunny Wertham. I'm a resident of Campbell's Creek. I live on Quail Oak Drive, which intersects with Deerfield. I'm opposed to the project as it has been stated. My reason being, our subdivision is old, but it's peaceful, it's quiet. I don't want to see that go away. Our subdivision is a family-oriented subdivision. We have families with small children who feel safe enough to push their children around Campbell's Creek in strollers. We have small children that ride bicycles with training wheels. You bring in seventy houses, all of this goes away. It will no longer be safe for families and children. Also, if this is to be built, there are two options for roads to enter the new subdivision. They can use Gatewood Road and have their own entrance, or they can use Direct Road. Each of those will access the property behind Campbell's Creek. We're done infringing on our quality of life. That hasn't been brought up, it probably hasn't been looked at. But that's my concern, that and as my neighbor stated, the traffic situation. Our street is not in the best condition. It'll only get worse with increased traffic. We have no sidewalks. People walk in the middle of the street because it's safe enough. So I am opposed to this new subdivision, the way it's been presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Wertham and I live in Campbell's Creek also. I live on Quail Oak Drive. And my biggest concern also is to, as everybody has been seeing, the traffic pattern off of Route One into Campbell's Creek. That is a very, very dangerous spot. Sometimes when we are sitting there waiting to turn because of traffic, we have to move on up to the second, to the second driveway and try to get in there because we're scared that some of this, some of this traffic will run in the back of us sitting there waiting to turn into our own turn. It has been done before. People have died right there trying to get home, three, two minutes from their own home. They can't get there. They died right there in Number One Highway. Ninety-five is backed up. They come off from Carmel Church and Lady Smith. They hit Route One, they're passing Campbell's Creek. Sometimes on Sunday evening when that traffic is backed up, we have to sit in the road so that we can get home. So I think that adding even more traffic there, and like you said, also the, our subdivision, we have a lot of seniors there and we have children and younger people there. These seniors, which I'm one of, we can walk through Campbell's Creek and not have to worry about it, about the cars and the traffic right now. We have people now that don't live there, come through there like bad out of hell, excuse me, flying through there. And all we need is even more of that, to, of people coming there. And you know, like I say, you never know where you, where you, where they're coming from or whatever. No privacy, as the lady said, there's going to be no privacy around there. I also think they need some kind of fences. I personally care less about the walking trail because you got to walk to get through the walking trail. We are on Campbell's Creek right now, we can just walk, we walk around our own subdivision. Pretty much everybody has a pretty good idea of who everybody is and we have been working. I've lived there for thirty-five years and it's never been that, that many, you know, that much trouble around there. It's been ardent in things, but nothing that we have to be, they ain't worry about the danger of. And right now, like I say, I'm, I can't get with all this traffic because this, they're right passing right by our street. And like I say, we can't even, you're not going to be able to walk. If you have, the driveways are short, we don't have sidewalks. If we even, if you even have somebody over, we're parking on the street. You, you get more traffic, that many more, one-hundred-and-forty more cars coming through there, where are you going to park? So we're not supposed to have company over anymore because we can't park? Because somebody doesn't want to spend that extra money to build a road where they need to be building it at?
Ma'am, I have to ask you to wrap up. Thank you.
I'm fine, thank you.
Anyone else?
How's it going? My name is Brian Shirizia. I also live in Quail Oak. I agree with everything my neighbors have said so far, so I'm not really going to elaborate on that, but one of my concerns, one of my concerns is the North River runs behind some of our homes. And ever since Lady Smith Village was built, all that water drains into that same river, which causes our backyards to flood majorly. I got videos, my deck turns into a pier when it rains. So when you build this new development, where is this water going to go? Because any more water and it's going to touch my house. I've got a half an acre and it rises eight feet when it rains. And a little bit more water and I'm not going to have a house. My shed sits on pylons this tall so that it doesn't flood. I got video if anybody would like to see this. This is one of my main concerns because we already pay out the tail end for flood damage, flood insurance. And this, this, I think this needs to be addressed as well. Where's this water going to go when you build this new development? So that was my question.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Tiffany Bradshaw and I live on Oak Circle. I live across the street from the first gentleman. So I have been in Campbell's Creek. I'm thirty-six years old my whole life. And so much so, I love Campbell's Creek. I moved from my mom's house to another house in Campbell's Creek just because I love the neighborhood. We are all family there. Campbell's Creek is a quiet neighborhood, a place where I wanted to, I want to raise my children. If we build this, if they build the seventy-town homes, it's definitely going to be a lot of traffic. I've seen a lot of accidents at Deerfield, lost people like family to accidents. Even had my brother have an accident. Someone ran in the back of him at Deerfield in Route One. And I feel like it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a good fit for us at, in Campbell's Creek. And I'm saying that as a young mother of five boys. So I'm asking the board, please, please consider us that have been there forever and would like to keep our neighborhood quiet and family. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For or against?
My name is Carolyn. Good evening, I'm sorry. Carolyn Minor and I live on Quail Oak. My neighbor who just spoke, we're neighbors, next-door neighbors. I'm not going to have very much to say. I've been there forty-two years. Campbell's Creek has been my home. This is my home and I want it to continue to be my home. It is a quiet neighborhood. We had something like this, I think they mentioned, years ago when they wanted to bring apartments in with the playground. To me, this is something similar to what they wanted to do back in the day. I don't agree with it. We don't want, we don't want the subdivision in the back of our homes. Like you said, we're close-knit in Campbell's Creek and we wanted to stay that way. And I'm totally against, I'm totally against it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Mosby. I'm a member of Madison District and I live on Quail Oak Drive. All of these are my neigh, well, most of these are my neighbors. I would just like to say, I've been in Campbell's Creek for thirty-three years and my concern, I don't think we know enough of what you're bringing in or not bringing in. But, you know, like my neighbors say, a lot of them are dealing strictly with the fact that most of the people that have spoken are going to be on that, that area, in that area where you want to make an entrance. Or either those that are dealing with the water issues, they're already dealing with water issues. But my concern is what does this do to the personal property taxes of the people that are in Campbell's Creek?
Can we get on that? You know, what are you going to do for us? That's my concern. So, you know, like I said, we don't have enough information. Some people have already drawn or made decisions on, on their thoughts on whether they want it or not, but there's a lot more that you could put out there to say this and this is going to happen. Sure, it'd be great to have a playground for the kids and so on and so forth, but there are a lot of other concerns, like they're saying, as far as the entrance off of Route One, with people getting slammed in the back because there is no turn entrance. There aren't any sidewalks for people walking from Campbell's Creek to Blue Line. You know, we kind of got left out because we're the older subdivision and things just weren't developed, but things are developing now, but how can we...
Public hearing is closed. Stay, I forgot any questions?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is allowed ten minutes to address any items that were brought up during public comment if he wishes. Well, that was very productive. We got a lot of good comments from the public and, you know, some of these issues we've already thought about and are considering ways of addressing it. I'd just like to talk specifically to a couple points that were made. VDOT and the whole turn lane thing, we knew that was going to come up. And unfortunately, by the time the staff report was ready, VDOT didn't have comments back. They just sent us some notes on what their thoughts were. So, you know, the owner of the property and the developers are fully aware that's not a good area right there. And we would certainly entertain, you know, proffering a turn lane if it would, if it would help ease some of the community's concerns. And that's something that, what we would like to do is set up a community meeting with the public. And we'll have that somewhere where we can get everybody in front of the room that's interested in talking with us, talking through this, showing the plans. We'd be happy to do that, get the public's input before, you know, before we go any further. As far as the water, and this is just a general development plan, so we didn't do any thorough, thorough stormwater management calculations. That'll all be done when we submit the site plan and the plaits for the, for the subdivision. So what you see now is a GDP, a general development plan, and a lot of the hardcore engineering and the number crunching and stormwater management and water and sewer, you know, we're still working through some of that. And that'll all be taken care of when we do the site plan's middle. Aqua and Caroline County Water System, I mean, that, that would be something we'd be interested in talking about. You know, I don't know how that fits with, you know, the county and Aqua. I'm sure there's some, I know there's a lot of friction from the public with them and I'm sure there's some friction with the county as well. So that would be something that we would like to maybe explore further. I think that would be a real, you know, benefit to the, certainly the people that live there and certainly to the county as well, because those rates are exorbitant from what, from what we're seeing. As far as the HOA, you know, we're not going to ask to join Campbell's Creek HOA and we're not going to ask them to join ours. We're going to form our own HOA. There'll be no additional expenses to anybody in Campbell's Creek for the HOA. We'll have our own, you know, for the Bellow Woods subdivision. Let's see. The federal housing and the subsidized housing, that's not an option. You know, I heard a lot from people that have been here, you know, I've lived here thirty years, I've lived here forty years, and long-term residents, well, my clients, they've lived here, you know, forty years and they're in business and they have successful businesses here. They've been here a long time too. So, you know, we want to work together with, with the Planning Commission in Caroline County and the Board of Supervisors. And we would be interested in sitting down and talking to these people that express concerns about that. That's something that we usually do for rezonings, pretty, it's pretty common to do that. So that's something that we could set up if that's, you know, something that is desirable to the, to the, to the Planning Commission as well as the public. Okay, so the security back behind there. You know, in my opinion, you're going to have that area developed. So there's going to be eyes and ears back there. The problem that I think from some of this vandalism is, you run into the woods. There's nobody back there watching what's going on. So you want to throw a rock at a window, you throw the rock... So, you wanna throw a rock at a window, you throw the rock and you run into the woods. There's nobody, you know, patrolling, there's no, you know, security patrol, a homeowner's security patrol or anything like that. So, you know, the, the whole security thing, I would, I would question if it's gonna get worse with more eyes and ears back there watching what's happening, 'cause it is a pretty isolated area in the back of it. The parking, you know, each one of these units is gonna have a garage, a one-car garage, and there's gonna be one parking space minimally beside that. So, all these units will have two parking spaces included with it. And there's, there's some extra parking over, you know, along the street there. So, I think, you know, the whole accessing, you know, we're planning on using Deerfield Road as a strict access and connect to the other, the other end of Deerfield Road. So, I don't see a whole lot of traffic, you know, using those other two entrances that are common for Campbell's, Campbell's Creek that, or they're using them now. So, and that's something, again, that we'll just have to work our way through. So, you know, we wanna be, these, my clients are part of the community now. They wanna continue to be part of the community. These folks are in, in the community as well, so I think we should just get together and talk through it. You know, we're not gonna be able to accomplish everything that everybody wants, you know, the whole privacy. I, I like my privacy well, you know, that, you don't own that property, so, you know, there's only so much you can do with that. But I think it would be very beneficial to set up a, a community meeting and just walk through it with them. That's really all I have. You know, the walking trails, we're concerned. I mean, if that's something that, you know, you get a consensus on whether the folks don't like them, we can, we could remove them. But normally in communities, these planned developments, community interconnection is usually an important thing, because, you know, there is, these folks walk, you know, there's still gonna be walking trails and it, all that, you know, provided. So, you know, I think we can come to terms with, you know, certainly their concerns, some of them, and we can come to terms with some of you, the Planning Commission's terms as well. So, with that, I'd just like to hear any other questions you have and thanks for hearing from us.
Thank you. Any questions from the...
Mr. Freely.
Yes, sir.
I see these are portrayed as three-story units.
Two-story units.
Two-story?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the lower level with the garage is not a story in of itself?
Well, that's the first story. So, you're gonna have a one-car garage on the side and then you'll have the living on the other half of that and then you'll have one story above that.
I just saw a photo and it looked like three stories to be, but maybe my old eyes are playing tricks on me.
Okay, so, it would be three stories if you count the garage.
Yes, okay. And how many bedrooms are we projecting for these units?
Um, probably three.
Three bedrooms?
Probably three bedrooms.
Has any thought been given to making this a mixed of single-family dwellings and some of the townhouses?
Yeah.
And I realize, business, you wanna get the biggest bang for your buck. Okay, I understand that.
Right.
If it were to be approved, I, I would rather see it be more in continuity with the remaining neighborhoods instead of it all being townhouses, to be quite honest with you.
Okay.
So...
So, you would be interested in seeing more of a mixed use with some singles?
Yes, sir, maybe a fifty-fifty mixture. And, and that's just my thoughts and the feedback that, that I have gotten. So, just food for thought.
Yeah, that's something we could consider. You know, we can, so, it's all about the numbers. So, you know, the, the higher density you always get with townhouses. For single-family homes, you don't want much of a lot smaller, maybe sixty-five hundred square feet.
Yes, sir.
So, in that footprint, you know, with a townhouse, you might get four units as opposed to one.
I, I'm with you. I'm, I'm, I'm on your game plan there. I understand exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean, that would be something that I'd have to, uh, address with the client and go through a scenario of what that really looks like. You know, that's something we could consider. The thing that interests me back there, though, is with all that different zoning around it, you know, if you look at that area as a whole, it's almost a mixed-use area the way it is, because you have Campbell's Creek, right, which are small, or medium-sized lots with single families. You've got, you know, zoning to the other backside of us, it's gonna, it's already zoned PDH, so that's gonna be that piece. And if you look at that comprehensive plan, that's very interesting, because Campbell's, the, the subdivision that we're getting ready to develop is the only area that is outside of that public, or planned development area. And that is like the delineation line between planned development and low-density residential. So, while it may not be verbatim with a comprehensive plan, and we found a comprehensive plan from two thousand and seven, I think it was, which, it really doesn't matter, but it was zoned as, as planned uni, or planned, planned density at that point when they did that the first time. So, that's a real touchy area there, because you've got a little bit of everything. You know, my client owns some commercial space up front, you know, up by the Route One. So, I mean, that's something we would consider having a look at, if you wanted more true mixed use and include singles on, on our project as well.
I think you might, might be better served exploring that.
Okay, so, we could do it as a, as a planned development, but we would just include some, some single families in it, 'cause we gotta have it re-zoned for the townhouses.
Right, and realize that, that's, it's just a suggestion.
Okay.
And I understand what you're saying about the usage in the surrounding areas, because that's evolution from Planning Commission to different Board of Supervisors to different times.
Yeah.
I, I was really struck in our packet that, of, of the comments that we had from the Sheriff's Office. And I, I was a bit shocked and that's why I wanted to break from protocol a little bit. I, I wanted definition of the two children and the one pregnant lady who died. I wanna make sure that that was as a result of motor vehicle accidents. So, I will get in touch with Sheriff Philippa myself to find out how long ago, what the circumstances were, because certainly we don't want a traffic hazard like that.
Yeah.
Floating out there. And I realize that that's not your client's fault. That was something that was done prior to.
That's right.
So...
But, you know, and we, you know, in discussions with my clients, we realize that's not an ideal situation. I mean, it's, it's right there, plain as day.
Yes.
You need a turning lane in there.
Yes.
Okay, and that's something we would, you know, be very willing to talk through later as, for a proffer. We could proffer a turning lane. But at that, you know, we're gonna put tons of money into a turning lane and then you want us to lose some of the density from the townhouses. You know, it's like six of one, half a dozen the other, and sooner or later, the numbers don't work and...
Right. I'm, I'm with you. I, I fully understand, sir.
So, I mean, we could definitely take a look at that. We're gonna have to get the VDOT comments and, you know, even though the VDOT warrants don't say you need a turn lane, doesn't necessarily mean that there shouldn't be a turn lane there, right?
Common sense needs to prevail.
Common sense needs to come into play and, and my clients fully recognize that and we'd be more than happy to, to look at that. But we have to control, you know, the cost, because if we proffer that, that's, that's a large sum of money. I mean, you can really get some money tied up and you have to have right-of-way on both sides and, you know, you need to taper a D cell lane on, on the turning lane. So, that would be something we would get VDOT comments from and then, you know, fully consider that.
All right. The townhouse units, would they be rentals or would they be owned as a...
They're gonna be owned. The plan is to sell them, you know, single families. And, you know, I heard the federally, uh, house, federal housing. We're not interested in doing that. We look at these as, you know, not low income or, or, or anything like that. These are, we're gonna try to make these affordable, you know, working family homes, nothing, you know, high-priced and outlandish like the real estate market is now. We see this as, you know, Campbell's Creek is a lovely community. I mean, those people are very, it is a community, they're very tight, you know, which is great. So, you know, we envision this as just becoming a, a bigger part of that community. So, you know, we'd like to target, you know, working family homes. And whatever the market says the price is for that, then that's what we'll, you know, we'll sell them for. But it's, there's not gonna be any federally subsidized housing back there.
One thing about the perceived traffic numbers is that those numbers are generated from peak hours, morning and AM.
Exactly right.
Or PM. And you're, you're speaking of a very narrow window, in my opinion, when really you need to consider the whole day. People running to the store, people going shopping, people picking the kids up from school.
Yeah.
Many things that go on. The UPS driver, the FedEx, you know, that...
Yeah, that's, that's very true. And, you know, the gentleman stated that VDOT classifies your ten-vehicle trips per day, per unit. Well, that, that's true. That sounds like a lot, but it's like you said, you leave in the morning for work, you're, you know, through the day, people are coming and going, delivery trucks, you know, the wife might not work, she's shopping. So, you know, that, that is a rather high number, in my opinion. And we did some of the peak hour calculations. That's where that eighty-nine I mentioned came up and the other, I think the PM peak hour was like sixty-nine. And if it goes over a hundred, that kind of VDOT signals a turning lane there. But, yeah, and the traffic, I just wish we could've got something from VDOT before we had this, that we could, you know, talk to them and, and see, you know, what their, their thoughts are on it, 'cause we're kind of blind. And, you know, the entrances, they'll all be VDOT entrances, the entrances will be curb and gutter, so, and they'll be wide, have a wide throat width and a wide taper on it. So, those entrances that are there now, especially on Deerfield, are a little, a little tight and very, very raw, you know, they're not, there's not much of a design went into that. So, I think what we should do is, you know, let's see if there's interest in setting up a community meeting with all of us and whoever wants to attend. We can schedule that, we'll put it out there for the folks to see when it is and we'll, we'll sit down and we'll talk about it. Hopefully by then, we'll have a VDOT, a VDOT comments back. And, you know, once we get that, we can show some scenarios of, you know, a turning lane, let them see what that's gonna look like. So, and, you know, we certainly, like I said, my clients have been in this community a long time, they've done some really good stuff. And, you know, they'd like to continue to be a part of the community and, and, you know, try to address some of these concerns. You can never address them all. I mean, it's just, unfortunately, that's just not how it works. But the important ones, the turn lane, the stormwater management, maybe, you know, the aquia, Aqua versus Caroline County Water and Sewer, our hands are kinda, you know, tied with that. But, you know, we'd be interested in discussing any of those options at a, at a planning or at a community meeting.
I think that would be a very good idea.
Yeah.
Might ally some of the fears and concerns and might bring up some additional concerns that the residents have that you can address.
Yeah, and I'm sure, you know, these folks saw the, saw the GDP, which, you know, that's not really a detailed engineering plan. That's just, here's what we're thinking, here's where we think they're gonna go, this is what we think we're gonna have there. And, you know, if it gets approved, we're gonna have to go through the whole site planning scenario, you know, beat Greg down a little bit and try to Craig down to see if we can get that through quickly. But that's really the plan, the formal stuff.
Very good. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Uh, yes, I had similar concerns as Mr. Schwartz. Just so much traffic on that one road and currently no turn lane. Seventy units is just, you know, a lot to be. I realize there's planned development behind the subdivision.
Yeah.
But that's probably gonna be coming in from a different road, I would assume, yeah.
Yeah, that might come up. It would, you know, it's right up the street.
What, how many, question for staff, do you know how many houses are in Campbell's Creek right now?
One forty-nine, I hear.
How much?
One forty-nine.
So, we're increasing the traffic by about a third, is what we're saying.
Yeah, that, yeah, theoretically, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, 'cause we're about, we're adding about...
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-some percent. So, yeah. So, yeah, I, it's, yeah, I'd like to hear more from VDOT at this point.
Yeah, so would we.
Yeah.
So would we.
Yep. VDOT provided their comments at the last minute, right before the staff report came out.
Yeah, I read.
Yeah, they're, they're attached in the staff report.
Yeah, that's where I got the, you know, the, the peak hour numbers and stuff from. They really, what really struck me is they, you know, that turning, that entrance right there doesn't have warrants for a turning lane. I mean, that's just the logic behind, or illogic behind these numbers that VDOT comes up with, 'cause Route One is a very heavily-traveled road. We get it. There's traffic mornings and evening, peak hours, lots of it. Ninety-five backs up, everybody's coming into Route One, which is really not a good idea, 'cause that usually gets worse doing it that way. But, and, and these are things that we can address, you know, at the community meeting and, and with you all, whenever you, if we can get this, have some more time to work on this and get, you know, the, the community's opinion and, and you guys' opinion and see what we can come up with.
I think the town meeting will be, you know, here with the people of Campbell's Creek. So...
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm going with. Yeah, so, you know, the, the summary of all that winded explanation I gave you is we would ask for a deferral, 'cause I think it's, you know, we're being very optimistic if you would vote for approval, but we didn't expect that. But we would like to have another go-around with the Planning Commission and have a community meeting, so maybe we can get some of these folks' concerns addressed and, you know, maybe turn them to see, you know, what we have in our, in our vision.
Mr. Attorney, since the applicant has asked for the possibility of deferring this at this time, can we make that motion?
Yes, you would, you would make a motion to either accept, the motion would be to accept the requested from deferral and then you vote on it.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to make a motion that we accept the applicant's request to defer this at this time.
And I would add, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Weber, to the next meeting?
Yeah.
To the next meeting, yeah.
I'll, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, would, would you guys like to be, any of you all would like to be invited to the community meeting? All of you?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, this happens to be my neighborhood, so...
Okay, all right. We'll make sure you, you can bring...
Yeah, Craig, Craig has all my data.
Okay. All right, well, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time and hopefully we can get this worked out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is in and all matters. Have staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've been provided a memo regarding the solar energy overlay district and the ma- major and minor solar projects. This ordinance was directed back to you from the Board of Supervisors with a direction to look at it. And so, we're bringing this in front of you to ask if you would like to go to public hearing with this in some fashion in August.
Oh, and modifying the, the overlay district itself?
Well, you have, you have a choice. You could authorize a public hearing to work on the ordinance and make some changes, or you can authorize a public hearing to repeal the ordinance and work on it while it's repealed to then try to get it into working fashion with that, things that we've learned about solar over the last eighteen months, two years.
Also, the state is going, is looking into the, the runoff from the panels, right? But that won't, that information won't be available till next year?
That's correct. The DEQ is looking at changing the way stormwater is calculated for solar facilities and they expect that their guidance document and memo for regulations to be out sometime in the middle to end of next year, in the, in the second half of next year. So...
That's, that's the reason we actually held this up, is that correct?
That's correct. We would like to get the regulations from DEQ to be able to add into our ordinance. And so... And so, at this time, we can either go to public hearing to repeal and work on the ordinance, or we can work on the ordinance while it's active.
Good question. Thank you. How does, how's Mr. Finch feel about this?
Staff feels that...
I'm sorry, staff, how does staff feel about this? I'm sorry.
Staff feels that we've learned a lot over the last 18 months, two years with solar, and that we need to make more than a couple adjustments to the solar ordinance. It might be best to repeal the ordinance and work on it and get it into an acceptable state to then reinstate that.
Okay, so then, when would we repeal the ordinance?
The public hearing, if you were to authorize public hearing for August, the public hearing would be in August to repeal the ordinance, and then we could begin work sessions at such timeframe as you wish to start adjusting.
We've spent, we've spent a lot of time on this.
Yeah. The state's coming up with some, you know, more environmental information on the water runoff next year, so...
And so, I think at this particular stage, I think we should definitely remove this ordinance at this time the way it is, okay? And therefore, it gives us the opportunity...
To work on it.
To work on it and to get some additional data that the state is putting out, because we don't know where this is going to go, and we worked really hard just to get this far, and now all of a sudden we're going, oh, this isn't working anymore. So, I would, I would highly hope that we should be able to put this out to the public, that we're going to eliminate this ordinance.
If you don't make the motion, I will.
It's, and this doesn't go to the Board of Supervisors, right? This stays with us.
They send it down to you.
Yeah.
And so, the repeal would go through you, would go through you, and then go to the board.
Oh, it is gonna go.
The ordinance would be directed back to you to work on.
Again, to work on, yes.
Right, so it would go to the board, but then come back to you again.
Yeah, and I feel like we need the more, the new information from the state, which is several months coming, you know, before we move forward with anything. So, repeal is...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Okay.
I move that we author our staff to advertise a public hearing for the repeal of these statutes.
Second.
That would be the August meeting, that's...
Yes, for the August meeting.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, there's one more item under In-N-Out. In front, in your packet, you have a draft text amendment regarding garage accessory structures on corner lots. We are asking to authorize public hearing for that text amendment.
So, you're asking us, excuse me, you're asking us to authorize this public hearing for this?
Yes, for this text amendment that was sent to us, yes.
Mr. Chair, you would like to make a motion, sir?
I'd like to make a motion that we advertise a public hearing for...
Accessory structures.
Garage setback?
For garage accessory structures on corner lots in the R1 zoning district.
Yes, sir. Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, you wanna authorize that for July, August?
July would be fine.
July?
Yeah, let's get it on there as quickly as we can.
Okay. With that, staff has no further announcements.
Can I make a motion, John, to July?
Second.
Third. Be quick on that one.
Second, third. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good evening, Mary.